Good evening. Good evening. Glad to have such a nice turnout this evening in Peru. It's nice to see so many people care about our local politics. My name is Rob Fields. I'm with Peru Indiana today and I will be serving as the moderator for this evening's event. I have a couple of quick introductions before we get started, want to make sure you know some folks here. The gentleman to my left here is Tim Simkins. He will be assisting with the moderating of the debate this evening. Tim is the owner of Trebolia Communications here in town. Telova, I'm sorry. Nervous, as you can tell. If you have a cellphone that gets broken in this town, this is the guy to go see. He can fix it, trust me. Stacy Mize is a volunteer with Peru Indiana Today. Stand up Stacy, so they can see you. Nope? Okay. Well Stacy's gonna be taking us some photographs for us tonight. Richard Spencer of GZ Productions is going to be helping us out with the sound, so it's thanks to Richard that you can hear me this evening. So we appreciate him very much, thank you. And the beautiful young lady walking away over there, standing in the yellow dress, that's Kim Field. She is the owner of Peru Indiana Today and responsible for us being here this evening. So thank you Kim for all that you do. Take a minute just briefly to explain our format, how we're gonna operate this evening. We're going to do, split basically in two halves. We're gonna begin with the city council candidates. And for the city council candidates, we're gonna invite them up by party. They can introduce themselves and give a brief, two to three-minute address to you on their background, why they're running, what they hope to accomplish as a member of city council, basically whatever they would like to address you on. I'm aware that some aren't here this evening. I know some are out of town. I know Mr. Guston, who is a current member of the council, just got out of the hospital. He was supposed to be here this evening and he let me know today that he was unfortunately not gonna be able to be here because he just got out of the hospital. But those that are here, we appreciate you being here and we'll give you an opportunity to address the group and let them know what your hopes and ambitions are for this evening in Peru. And then after that, we'll take a few minutes, we have some refreshments and you can mingle and talk with those candidates on an individual basis, maybe learn more about them, they have some material maybe that they have to present to you. And then at 7:00 PM sharp, we'll start with the Republican debate with the three candidates for mayor. So that's basically our format this evening. So if I could have the Democratic candidates for city council join me up here? The Democratic candidates that are present for city council, if they could join me up here? I will introduce Steve Anderson, who is here this evening but has elected not to speak to us this evening. Steve, wave to the crowd. Thank you Steve for coming, appreciate it. We'll start with Carrie Young first, Council-at-Large candidate.
Good evening everybody. Let's begin, my name is Carrie Young. I am running for city council at large. Born and raised here in Peru. I work for First Farmers Bank and Trust. I've been there for 15 years. Pretty dedicated to the community, I'm very well involved. Right now I am the Parks Board for the City of Peru. I'm also on the Planning Commission for the City of Peru. I volunteer for the United Way, just a lot of different organizations that I put forth and really look forward to running a good campaign and working together with everybody in the city.
We also have with us Cheryl Lee, who is a current member of the council, serving District Four.
Good evening. Again, my name is Cheryl Lee, City Council for District Four. And first of all, I'd just like to say that I'm a proud Peruvian. Born and raised here, enjoy calling Peru my home. This is my 12th year serving on the council and have a great desire to continue, just to help us grow in a positive, very positive way. I'm a mother of one son, one grandson, a member of Wayman AM Church, and a proud member of the Democratic Party. My main desire as a councilwoman is to bring more jobs, not only more jobs, but better paying jobs to our city. I create our roads and walkways, continue to support our downtown revitalization program, and for Pete's sakes, I pray this year we get some more industry for retail. We need stores in Peru. So I do work with economic development and that's gonna be one of my main goals, just to be a better helper for the community and growth. As a councilwoman, I work with economic development program, I'm a liaison for the Park Board, I work with Civic Center, tax benefits for our current industry, and also new industry coming in. We try to give them a basement so that they can grow and also bring in new employees for the city. My personal platform is to continue to serve people with disabilities. That's one of my main things here in Peru. I serve on the Board of Mercy Capabilities, as many of you may know, and we also take care of seniors, not just people with disabilities. And I work with men on Main Street. We help buy free lunch program for adults, three days a week, so I enjoy doing that. And I will continue to give a voice to whoever has a concern with the community. One of my best character traits to me is that I like to listen, you know, and people want to be heard, you know? So that's one of the important things to me is just to strive to be a person to those -- not everybody feels like they can come out and talk, not that I'm that good at it, but still, they want to be heard, so I just try to support them and pass on and do what I can to help them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your Democratic candidates for city council. Now if I could have the Republican candidates for city council join me, please? I'm gonna drag a chair up there just in case, so after you -- no, I gotta do what I can.
He's saying you're going first, girl. What? Watch what he's saying.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Our first speaker will be Patricia Russell, who is a candidate in District Four.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Russell and I'm running for city council for the District Four of Peru and I am running on the Republican ticket. And I would like to serve Peru for the next four years. I was born and raised here in Peru and I've been a lifelong resident, except for a few lapses. I've moved up north in Indiana for a little while, then I moved to south into Alabama for about a year. But the important thing is I've always moved back. Peru is where my family is and my friends and is where I want to be. I am married to John Russell, who is the love of my life. We will be married 18 years in October and we have six daughters between us. We have nine grandchildren and one great-grandchild on the way. I graduated from Peru High School in 1974. We will have our 44th, 45th reunion this year and that's really hard for me to believe. I graduated from Indiana University in 1991 with a Bachelor of Science in Business and I found employment and have been working here since. Right now I work as a substitute teacher for our Peru Community Schools and I've been doing that for the last 10 years. In my job as a substitute, I have watched the students and seen how they are affected by what is going on in class. For example, one year, a sixth grade class I was studying for had to create their own countries and the assignment was to continue working on them. And they had to decide what kind of government and what kind of country they wanted. This one group asked me for my opinion and they asked me whether we should have a democracy like we have or maybe a socialist country. Well, I had to explain to them that we have a republic. And they wanted me to explain what that meant. Well, I said that in a democracy, and this is as simple as you can get, so they could understand, you have a majority where they rule and they tell you what you're gonna do. And in a republic, you get to have representatives to help so that everybody has a say in what is going on in government. Well, they decided to be a republic. Why am I running? Well, I have made consistent voting for the last 16 years at least. I have watched what is going on in our country and I have paid attention on Facebook to some of the comments I've read on the future of Peru and the positive future of Peru. I've had my own thoughts and opinions about things, but usually I only shared that with my friends and family. But, one night, one of my friends told me I should run for city council. Well, I was really surprised. I thought about it for about two days.
I approve this message.
I thought about it for about two days and then I decided to go up to the courthouse and file the run. I thought about, if you come to conclusions that if you don't make an effort to change things in your area, in your home, then you have to -- I got long. Anyway, if you don't work and do something yourself to make a change, then you haven't done everything that you could possibly do. If elected, I would work with the administration and fellow city council members to be a good steward for our city. We have some work to do and to help Peru grow. And I would like to be that person to help do that. So I am here to ask for your vote and I'm asking for you to ask your neighbors to vote for me too. Thank you.
Laura, do you wanna come next? Sorry. This is Laura Disbro, who is an at-large candidate for city council.
Good evening ladies and gentlemen. I'm for the Peru City Council at Large running. It's a pleasure to be here and I hope I get to meet more of you later on this evening. I have been a lifetime president of Miami County, been through the highs, been through the lows, and enjoy living here, being part of Peru, being part of Miami County. It's a rich place to be in. I used to attend Church of the Holy Trinity and while there as a parishioner, I was a longtime vestry member and served as an officer quite a few years as a junior warden and also a couple of years of treasurer. As part of our membership, we work together for outreach programs. We have multiple outreach programs. We try to do and care to those in need in our community, minister to them best of our abilities. My favorite part was to have our recitals. We had community recitals and when we had Cole Porter Fest, it was fun working with the museum for a couple of years with that. I attended and graduated IB Tech twice. Once wasn't good enough, I had to go back to them again. And I had the pleasure of teaching, being an adjunct instructor for two years for their method coding and billing program. Currently, I'm working with Lewis Harbor Memorial Hospital and be four years this October. I'm also a longtime YMCA staff and member. I started out as a volunteer in their aqua program and then I was asked, "Hey, I think you'd be a good lifeguard." Sure, why not? Been a lifeguard ever since and for the last two years also took on certification of being a lifeguard instructor. So not only do I have a lot of fun working with people and it's all about drowning prevention and just making it well-known how to swim, how to be safe around water, but now I can also teach CPR and first aid with the community. And that brings to the next level. Why am I running? I have great concerns with the future of Peru and Miami County. My vision would be, why can't we bring in large companies? I think we can. We're in a very good place in Indiana. We're well-placed. We have many roads that they can come and go. I would like to see large companies that would do more than just 20, 30, 50 people. Why not be aggressive and bring in those big companies that will hire hundreds, thousands? That will start their entry level positions above minimum wage, would benefit and room for advancements within the company. By bringing in these big businesses, that means we can keep the people of our community here. I'm one of those individuals have to go find a job outside of our community. It's a shame that I had to do that, but that's just the way it happens sometimes. But if we can bring in these larger businesses, then we can keep people here. And by keeping people here, we don't have to worry about them moving away. We don't have to worry about them going outside the community for a job. By keeping them here, that means they will help our tax revenue for our community. And by increasing and bringing in that tax revenue, what does that do? That also strengthens the community. And as we get happier and get stronger, that means it stretches down and have a domino effect and we'll have better infrastructure, our roads, sidewalks, our utilities, police force, fire departments, more domino effect. The community will get stronger, we'll build. Then we have places like the YMCA can benefit. Their membership will get larger, more of their programs, they can expand on their programs. Think about our circus. How they can expand, have more youngsters that can come in and do performances, have larger scholarships to offer them for their college. Think of the more volunteer that people will go to help the circus. Look at all the other programs that we have that will benefit. Look at the current businesses here. I think they would like to jump on that gravy train and have that extra profit coming for them because we have more people here. We have extra businesses here. What about our extra? Our cars, our trails, the museum, and many other programs. I say the future is now. Let's be aggressive together. And I hope you will stand with me and be aggressive, let's go out and find those businesses and say, "Hey, we're here. We can offer the land that you need or whatever, but we're gonna beat out those other counties around us and we want you here. We want to keep our people here. We want to make our community stronger and step forward into the future." I hope you will be aggressive with me and it's a pleasure speaking with you this evening and I hope I get to meet more of you later on. Thank you.
Mr. Monix, would you join? This is Joseph Monix, he's a candidate for District Two.
District One.
Oh, I'm sorry, District One, my apologies.
Thirteen years ago, I transferred up here to become part of Team Risk as a National Commission Officer in charge of C2 operations at the command post. After six years of doing that, I retired and became the Mobility Manager for the 500-person strong maintenance squadron out at the base. Two years ago, I retired. Three years ago, I was asked to join the Plans Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. Since then, that was a lot to learn. I've had to dig into all the city ordinances and stuff and if anybody's ever read them, it's like dealing with stereo instructions. Since then, I've gone to every single city council meeting, board works meeting and that, because you have to understand how it all fits together. And if you don't understand that, you don't know how you can move forward. When we would get somebody that wants a zoning change or something like that, I'd get in my truck, I'd go up to the property and check it out, see what was going on, so I had a better idea. Then I'd get with the city and talk to them about it to find the pros and cons. So then when you get there, you can make an intelligent decision and help out the best you can. You're right, we do need more economic development in this town and there's chances to get that. I believe an office in town that just handled economic development itself that can actually walk people through the steps to get a business here, show them the pitfalls, who they have to get for their inspections, their zoning changes and so forth like that. If they have a problem with utilities or something, they have a go-to person that they can go to and not have to muddle through it themselves. There's been a couple of nightmares, but some people have stumbled through some real heavy steps to get their businesses up and running here. That doesn't help. To get people to move here, yes, we do need more business. We also need good schools here. Young people are not gonna want to move here if we don't have a good school system. And the city's gotta work with the school district and vice versa to keep that all growing and moving forward. If we don't have a good infrastructure and base and a place for people to come, they're not gonna come. The city has moved a long ways in the last three years. When I moved up here in 2005, they were just redoing Main Street. And I thought, wow, they're really working on this town and stuff. Two years later, it's pretty much where it stopped. Three years ago, downtown started to look better. We've got more businesses and Broadway's almost full, South Broadway. You know, we got nice businesses, they fixed up the buildings and all that. We need to keep that moving. And the city council, along with clerk treasurer and the mayor, they all have to work together, along with all the other departments, to make this come together. And until everybody's there and we're doing this, we're gonna have issues. But we have come a long ways, we have a long ways to go, but we're on the right track. And that's what I would like to do, is make sure I can do something to be on the right track. I'm retired, I have the time to invest in. I can take the time to, you know, do the little bit extras here and there where I can help out. So, and we need more of that, and we need community involvement too. I mean, it's just not the richness of our city or government here. We need, you know, people to take care of their places and help out with things and stuff like that. The more we get that, the more the city comes together as a real community and we will start to grow leaps and bounds. I completely believe in that. So I want to have a chance to help Peru as much as I possibly can for now. Thank you.
Next we'll have Kathleen, Kathleen Plata. Plata, I'm always sorry, I'm terrible with pronunciation of names. Final W, okay. She is running for the at-large seat for city council.
I didn't call first.
Not by me.
Not by you. You're fine. I'm Kathleen Plata, I'm from Rajuca and I thank you and your lovely wife for having this opportunity for us. It's kind of awesome, responsible to stand in front of the citizens of Peru and to ask you to vote for me and it's a little bit humbling. I love Peru. I almost get emotional about how much I love Peru. My grandparents owned a burger dairy store and my grandfather died for his business and for protecting his family. That being said, this town has welcomed me back. I moved and returned several, a few years ago and you guys have been incredibly welcoming to me. I created a family here, so many good friends. I've been doing some research and our city is what's called a micro-politane. That's 10,000 to 50,000 people. Every research, every piece of data indicates that these, the best micro-politane cities in America are not focused around industry. There's a revolution right now, a small-town America growing otherwise. The time of getting an industry into our city is pretty much gone. But that doesn't go without hope. Right now, I'd like to see entrepreneurs, any entrepreneur, businessperson here, stand please. I know it's embarrassing to stand. Brian, you're a businessperson. Okay, these people get to know, they're our future. Thank you. Thank you. They are our future. The main thing that makes micro-politans, the best, let's go back here, the best micro- Indiana micro-politane city is Jasper. Why aren't we, we need to take a trip down there. What's making Jasper work? So we have, we're supposed to be, micro-politans as a whole have a great community base, a sense of working together. Right now, we have some issues with that, but it is, it is a political season. That being said, that's no excuse, in my opinion. I'd rather work with somebody than argue with them. They have a great small business community, they're focused on arts and culture. Have any of you ever, well, it used to be, but we used to go to Smithy's Tuesday evenings and listen to the jazz. We have the best, some of the best musical artists here in the community. Our artists at Gallery 15 and elsewhere. Why can't we have a Northern Indiana art festival centered here? See, that's every micro-politan, every successful micro-politan city, that's what they have, is some kind of a culture like that. The biggest weakness micro-politans have is looking after our youth. That means we can work better with that. I was talking to Paul about this earlier. But we tend, micro-politan cities tend to forget the 21 and under. We've got some great school systems. My favorite people in the city, to be honest with you, are the young kids. The kids that are playing softball right now or baseball or circus practicing. I just, they're, we can't leave them behind. Here's my issue, or here's my platform. I want to provide oversight and transparency within government. Nobody should be favored in government. I don't work for the mayor, for the city council, I work for you. That's the way it's supposed to be, that's the way government's set up. It's the people that I listen to. Yes, we need to work with government, you know, with the mayor or the city council, with others, but I contract with you, this is my contract. I will provide transparency, I'll listen. My business card says my home phone number on it. You know, my email. You know, get ahold of me, but I want to create some economic diversity. I, we can't go after some of those big industries. We'd love to, right now, we're almost, like, almost ready to take a bow as far as industry goes, but there's so many possibilities out there. I want to work with you to be a possibility city. Some people say, "Oh, they can't, but what if we could?" Seriously, what if we could become like, like Logan Sports even ahead of us now, Wal Vax? What? Somebody's saying, "No, we can." Yeah, we can. The biggest question I've been asking is, what do you want? What do you need to hear? And what I'm hearing is people are losing hope. Wouldn't you lose hope? You know, wouldn't you just, you give up? We can't. We can't, I give up. This is, this is Peru, this is where I was born, this is where my heart is, this is where my family's based. My best friends are in this audience, so, anyway, I'm asking for you to vote. Contract with me and let's, let's, let's do some stuff, because we can. Thank you.
Next we have Mark Ramsey, District Five candidate. Were you guys taking bets on who was gonna be next? Were you guys taking bets on who was gonna be next? Were you taking bets on who was gonna be next?
Oh, we were taking. This is new for me. I know I've been on the radio for thirty-five years to try to help people in different areas. Now, it's a new, again, a new for me to try to help people in a different way. And when you've been in thirty-five years, you got to know a lot of people, and the reason why I was asked to run, because I like to talk. I don't know about that, but that's what I was, the number-one deal, that I like to talk. And this city is one of the, is one of the best that I've seen in a long time. It used to be cleaned up in certain areas, but I think we can do that by working as a team. We work together, we stay together, and this thing could change. Obviously, the industry is low here, but we could get that back, just as one of the, young lady said about being aggressive and getting, you know, some industry here. You know, we lost a couple over the last couple of months, like Square D, Kmart. We need to get something else in those particular areas at this particular time to get people working again. There is work here, but people sometimes don't wanna look for work. And then there's work that doesn't pay very much, but at least it's a start. You can get your foot in. That's basically how I got started, thirty-five, thirty-seven years ago. And they gotta, you gotta start somewhere, and this is the place to start. My biggest thing is to help the young kids. The kids are our future. I mean, I've been working down at the food pantry for the last couple of years, helping people there with their needs, and I know there's a lot of poverty in this particular town, but I've been trying to help those people with the food and things like that. But if we work down on West Canal Street and do what you wanna do, Sandy wants to do something down there, and I back that extremely well, and of course, the YMCA's supposed to be back there as well, so it looks like West Canal Street's gonna be well-full at this particular time. District Five. Again, what I want, really what I wanna do is, is clean up the area, also maybe pave a little bit in certain areas, but we need to make, we need to work as a team and as a group to get this particular city turned around and, and get a lot of things moving in the right direction. And if we can do that as a, as a group and as a team and as the mayor, I think we'll be okay. Ask for your vote.
I was wondering, maybe you saved me for the last, because you can't pronounce my name.
Well, that might be a good guess, actually. Last but certainly not least, we have Mr.
Saeid Ashni. That's a guy who needs that, although I'm used to that. I'm gonna move around a little bit. My name's Peter Ivanovich Saeid Ashni, and when I was a teacher at school, no one could pronounce my last name, so they said, "Mr. Sae," okay? Except for three people, so I've been a teacher for twenty-six years. But anyway, I'm kinda used to moving around. I'm all gonna jump around like Mick Jagger, though, okay? Not quite. Anyway, thanks for coming. I've got four little categories I wanna touch on. Personal information. I'm the son of Ukrainian immigrants. My mother and father came through Ellis Island, New York in 1950, settled in Peru, they wanted a quiet, quieter town. Uh, settled in Peru, Indiana, where I was born. I've spent most of my life in Peru. I like it. I went to Elmwood, it's a cool school. You know, a lot of interesting things going on, with football, baseball, you know? So, I had a good upbringing. I have a son, Peter Joshua Saeid Ashni. He's a digital marketing manager for the University of San Francisco. He and his wife have two boys, Luca and Boden, and the family lives in Santa Rafael, California. And my son's also working on a master's degree. Now, talking about education, second category. I graduated from Peru High School, had a lot of school teachers, went on to do my bachelor's degree at Ball State University in English and Russian, with also a focus on classical guitar. In 1992, I finished my master's, also in English, from Ball State University. And I, I like, I like to learn new things. And I'll tell you a little later on why I'm running for city council, District Number Three. So, now, to give you a little background on my employment, history. I have spent twenty-six years as a teacher with the Lafayette School Corporation, retired about five years ago, and I feel I can maybe contribute something for our schools. I know something about education. I spent twenty-six years in the classroom, at the middle-school level, and I feel like I might be able to put some new things out on the table and reach out to the schools in our community. Before that, actually, let me just rewind a little bit. So twenty-six years as a teacher, teaching Russian, German, and Japanese. My last five years, I taught ESL programs, English as a second language. And just recently, as recently as three years ago, I was tutoring two Ukrainian boys at Elmwood Elementary. So I feel like I may have some resources I can contribute in those areas. Prior to that, from 1975 to 1987, I opened up a guitar studio in Kokomo, so I've been in the business world too. And I taught as many as forty to sixty students a week, okay, in Kokomo, Indiana. All kinds of age groups, children, teenagers, young adults, the elderly, everybody included. So, I feel like, you know, we have to make a connection, a human connection. Okay, that's really important. All right. And then, last category, my community involvement. I had mentioned just recently, doing some tutoring at Elmwood. I've attended local churches here in the area since I've been living here in Peru. I coached the Little League baseball when my son played for two years. And I've also done volunteer work for Hickory Creek and Miller's Mary Manor, and I continue to do that. So, I'd like to reach out to the community, out to the people, this is what it's all about, that human connection. Okay? And now, I'll answer the question, why am I running? I gotta tell you this. When I told my son, he answered like this, and you've gotta appreciate this knowing my background. I've been playing guitar since I was twelve, and I still do music, and I've been a teacher twenty-six years. So when I told my son I was running, he said, "Wow." So, I know why he said that, okay? Because this is a new area for me, and you know what? I'm ambitious. I'm running because I'm ambitious. I've got some new ideas, and I like people, and I see a vision for Peru and Indiana, a lot of potential here, okay? A lot of potential, and I like the new challenge, okay? I'm just semi-retired. I don't teach in a classroom, but I'm still active out in the community, and I also have a number of rounds that I manage. So, I'm reaching out to the community. We've got to have some teamwork, it's a team effort, okay, to really, you know, make Peru a safe community for our children, and to provide opportunities, okay, for young folks, the elderly, everybody. But let me close, and thank you for listening, thank you for having me here. I will close with this. Our president said that we can make America great again. Well, here's my last thought. I wanna make Peru great, okay? So, let's take some team effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you to our Republican candidates for city council. Let's give them another round of applause. I now have a very distinct honor to introduce two individuals who are also running in the fall, and they're running unopposed on the Democratic side. We're very pleased to have them with us this evening. Tish Soli, the current city clerk treasurer, running unopposed as for city clerk treasurer, and Mayor Gabriel Greer, who is also running unopposed. Let you know, we did offer them each an opportunity to speak, and they politely declined, so didn't want you to think that we're not offering them the opportunity. Now you have a chance to speak with the candidates, enjoy some soft drink or some refreshments. We have some iced tea, some water, some lemonade, some cookies, if there's any left. For a few minutes, and then at seven o'clock sharp, we'll begin with the Republican mayors. So, please feel free to enjoy some refreshments and seek out your candidates and talk with them for a few minutes.